Now resume, and the first item on the agenda is the study session. Mr. Swenson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Carlet. We just have one item on the study session agenda this evening, and it is a financial overview. And this is a normal presentation that we make periodically across the year to bring the council up to date on the financial status of the city. In this case, because it is a new council coming together, I've asked our chief financial officer, Brent Mattingly, also to spend a few minutes on some of the structural elements of our budget, our city budget, and how we've organized our finances. This really becomes, I guess, a bit of a teaser for the upcoming budget process, which will be happening later in the spring, as you all know. So look at it from that perspective, and there'll be lots of opportunities to drill down and talk about every aspect of the budget once we get into that process. I would also mention that this fits real nicely, I think, with the higher-level economic presentation that you had at your workshop this past Saturday. The economists there, of course, gave you a good overview of the state and national economic circumstance, and now we take that down to the next level and talk a little bit about what's actually happening in the city of Peoria with our financial circumstance. So Brent Mattingly, our chief financial officer, will lead the discussion, and Barry Hoag, our finance manager, will join him. Brent?
Thanks, Carl, and thanks for your time this evening. Spent a few minutes with you. Like, I think if we talk for a few minutes about our underlying financial principles, how those have helped us maintain a strong financial position, we're going to talk about how we compare with some other cities in a couple of areas. That'll cover the first four items on the agenda. Then I can provide a brief economic outlook that relates to our forecast for our major operating funds. And the last two items will identify a few issues impacting our budgets over the next couple of years, as well as some topics that we'd like to spend some time with you in the next couple of months talking about. Peoria has a proud tradition of prudent financial management, and I think this is a testament to the council's commitment not only to establishing but also following key financial principles. And following those has helped the city avoid deep problems in the past and has positioned, I think, Peoria well as we move forward in the future. Peoria's demonstrated good past practice by working within the revenues that we have available to us. We have not looked at increasing tax rates to address difficult financial times. And one reason we have not had to do so is both the staff and the city council have had the discipline to take a multi-year approach to looking at our finances rather than just looking at the year, next year, coming ahead. This approach is consistent with our best financial management practices around the country. The Government Finance Officers Association places a strong emphasis on cities having a multi-year perspective. Our operating forecast looks out for a five-year period. A key practice that the bond rating agencies look to is the discipline of the city council in your financial management. One important illustration of this is the effort that staff and council have taken to distinguish our revenues between what we can count on year after year, what we call our ongoing revenues, so you'll hear that term a lot, versus what we term one-time revenues that are used to meet one-time needs in the following year's budget. An example of this that helps recognize the volatility in our local sales tax is new home construction. We budget sales tax on construction activities at a level we believe is sustainable year after year. Any revenues received in excess of that might be available in the following year to use on one-time expenditure needs versus ongoing commitments such as personnel. Any additional revenue in other categories is treated the same way, again, to support one-time expenditures if we don't think that that's a sustainable revenue source. Some other cities unfortunately haven't always followed that same principle. When the construction activity plummeted, some cities found themselves with ongoing expenditure commitments that their revenues could no longer support, and I think that really helped the city of Peoria during the last several years in handling that difficult financial time without, for example, any layoffs of staff positions. We also believe it's important to recognize that different cities have different local economies. Not all government should be managed the same in terms of its finances. Our financial management should be based on our economy here in Peoria. As an example, Peoria's retail sales tax is pretty reliant on automobile sales. Over 40% of our retail sales tax comes from those auto sales, and we know historically that auto sales are dependent upon things like disposable household income and particularly consumer confidence levels. Since some of our major revenues are subject to those economic cycles and consumer confidence, we believe our fund reserve levels should be established at appropriate amounts to help weather the normal economic cycles that a city is going to go through. So we have higher reserve levels, as an example, than cities maybe back east that rely on relatively stable property tax revenues for most of their general fund operating revenues. Another important foundation are your financial principles. In Peoria, we call those the principles of sound financial management. Not only are those are adopted by you as the city council, but more importantly, you've been committed to following those key financial principles. And just briefly, I want to take a minute going over a couple of those. There are a number, they include a wide variety of topics. Some of those are included on the slide. But in terms of financial planning and budgeting policy, some of the principles include, again, having the five-year forecast of revenues and expenditures for our major operating funds, only using those recurring revenues to pay for recurring expenses. Any fund balance that is above our reserve levels at the end of the year is budgeted in the following year, once it has actually been received by the city. And again, maintaining appropriate reserve levels in our various city funds. So what's the outcome from the track record Peoria has in following those financial principles? Well, we have a GO, general obligation bond rating that's only one notch below the highest you can get, AAA. Our utility bonds and excise tax bonds are all in the very strong AA category. We have strong fund reserves that are there really for three primary reasons. One is for emergencies. The second is to address large, unexpected financial events. And the third is to help stabilize our budget during economic cycles. We've also been able to provide our employees with excellent compensation and benefits. And our residents enjoy comparatively low tax rates and utility rates. And let me show you some of those comparisons. City of Peoria's retail sales tax rate is 1.8%. That gets split up, as you know, between the general fund, the half-cent sales tax fund, and the transportation sales tax fund. And you can see that we have a very competitive sales tax rate compared to our neighboring cities and other cities that can arrange as high as 3%. In terms of property tax, we also have a competitive rate. As the slide shows, our $1.44 total property tax rate includes both a primary piece and a secondary component. Our primary tax rate is 19 cents, and it generates about $2 million a year in the general fund and helps pay for broad services such as public safety, libraries, et cetera. The secondary tax rate is $1.25, and it's used exclusively to pay debt service on our general obligation bonds, which are the money we borrow to pay for large capital projects. The higher secondary tax rate historically has helped the city of Peoria address the growth that we've seen, as that growth has required expensive infrastructure to be constructed. And as you know, recent, relatively recently, the state has somewhat limited our usage of impact fees to pay for certain types of that infrastructure. One of the future seminars, if you will, that we'd like to have with the council would be on this topic of future growth, with part of that discussion focused on paying for future infrastructure and the services that we provide in those new areas. In terms of our utility rates, you can again see that our rates remain low compared to neighboring jurisdictions, and the past council had an interest in keeping those rates steady. As I mentioned earlier, we will be bringing utility rate study information to you during the budget discussions, along with our staff rate recommendations. As I mentioned earlier, much of our financial condition and our financial forecast is driven by economic forces. So we tap into several economist-type resources to help us as we prepare that outlook. One is the state's Joint Legislative Budget Committee, referred to JLBC. We also receive information from the University of Arizona ELLER Blue Chip Forecast. We've referred to that in the past. ASU publishes a real estate report, as do other professional consultants in terms of Jim Belleefor. We look at his single-family home reports and other real estate reports. And you heard just last Saturday from a gentleman from Elliott Pollock, Jim Rounds. I thought that Jim did a good job of summarizing the types of information that we've been receiving from those other sources as well. And during Jim's presentation, you were able to review recent economic indicators and trends that support the conclusion that there likely will be a continued but slow growth in the economy. We agree with that. There will be, we agree that there will be a continued recovery, but as Jim said, it's going to be modest. On the housing front, new home construction is muted largely due to how lending regulations are impacting potential buyers. This will result in lower population growth than what we saw during the years of high single-family home construction and borrowing. Based on the information we receive, we believe our revenue forecasts are realistic and reflect that continuing recovery over the next few years. Next, I'd like to give a brief overview of some of the major city funds. So let's start with the general fund. As you know, the general fund supports a number of day-to-day activities. As you can see, over 50% of the expenditures are related to public safety. Community services also makes up a significant portion down at the bottom in blue, but keep in mind that many of our recreation costs are offset by revenues that are paid from, for example, class participants. The general fund's also where we house a number of administrative functions, human resources, city clerk, finance and budget, and others. And those services that are used citywide are allocated to the areas that we support. So they're paid for in part by allocations from other funds. When we look at expenditures, you've seen before that over 70% are personnel-related. That's not really surprising since we're a service-oriented organization. When we're developing our financial projections, we include the compensation provisions in our MOUs, wage assumptions for other groups of employees, projections for health care, workers' compensation costs, and retirement programs.
Brent, before you go on, maybe this would be a good time to see if there's any questions or comments from the council.
What makes up the contractual, the 24% contractual on the general fund? If you explain that and I missed it, I apologize.
Oh, Barry, you want to take that?
So on the contractual, it'll be what we see is a lot of, whether it's other professional services or services that we contract with to do, provide some of the service. It also includes some of, like Brent was just saying, the internal service funds that we charge to all the other areas. Those show as expenditures as well, and those would be included and make up a pretty good chunk of it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So taking a quick look at general fund revenues, local sales tax is about one-third of our revenues, and as I mentioned earlier, over 50% of that local sales tax is from retail sales, again, with much of it coming from auto sales. These sales tax revenues can fluctuate quite a bit depending upon the economy and how the consumers feel about spending. Some of the major factors influencing our sales tax revenues are population growth and inflation rates. And again, as I mentioned earlier, our population growth is anticipated to be quite a bit less than we've seen historically. Another one-third of our general fund revenues come from what we call state shared income tax and sales tax. So we get the state shares some of the revenue that they collect in those areas with cities and towns. The income tax piece of that is, can be a challenge to forecast. We rely on several sources, including the Joint Legislative Budget Committee, who spends considerable time and effort analyzing both individual income tax and corporate income tax trends in Arizona. And we use the other resources that I mentioned earlier as well. Other significant revenues come from user fees associated with areas such as recreation programs, building permits, engineering fees, inspection fees, sales tax licenses, and those types of things. So our outlook for the general fund revenue includes modest revenue growth. We believe those revenue projections are realistic based on a continuing recovery in our economy. On the expenditure side, there is a need to pay for certain cost increases, including the personnel costs that I talked about a little bit earlier. So our forecast will include expenditure, those expenditures, as well as expenditure commitments that we've made that are tied to capital projects in your approved capital plan. One example of that is there's a project in the capital plan to build a community park in northern Peoria, and the operating costs of that park are estimated at about $1 million a year. So after that park is completed and opened, our five-year forecast would include that expenditure assumption as well. As such, there's going to be limited capacity for new expenditures. Departments will largely have to work within their existing means, and the situation is similar to last year where our ongoing capacity was largely used to cover normal expenditure increases. Similar to last year as well, there will be some one-time revenues available to cover one-time expenditures. So things are going to be quite tight next year.
Brent, can you give us some examples of what qualifies for a one-time expenditure? What kind of things would we purchase with that?
Sure. So Barry, do you want to do that?
Yeah, like one example is obviously when you hire a person, the person's salary would be ongoing, but the one-time things that would be included may be a vehicle. You purchase that vehicle once. We do do a replacement for it, but those are kind of some one-time expense there. We've done probably other, I know we've done some, trying to think what.
Well, one example would be consultants that are coming in on a one-time basis, either to do a certain type of project, or in some areas where the activity levels can fluctuate quite a bit, let's say inspections, depending upon the level of building construction going on. We may use one-time revenues to bring in contract positions to help address the spikes and that sort of activity might be an example.
Yeah, another one I just thought of is like repair and maintenance-type items. So if you're going to replace playground equipment or things like that, it would be probably a one-time expense.
Mayor Carlet, let me add a little bit to that as well. We also, of course, have in our, within our capital program, the major capital improvements are considered one-time expenses. And also, as was done at a recent council meeting, your last council meeting, are some of our economic development project work, where we bring in a firm under your economic development strategy. The dollars we use to incent certain behaviors of that firm in terms of their location here are also one-time dollars, you know, which is decidedly different than the ongoing expense, say, of adding a person, because we have the ongoing expense each year, and the increases, say, in salaries and benefits are calculated into our five-year forecast for the ongoing expenditures there. So kind of a number of different ways, but a great question. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
The last bullet point on the slide, as we move forward, we're going to have to keep our eye on the state legislature and how they handle the state budget. And you just recently heard proposed legislation that would significantly impact the local city sales tax on residential rental activity. We're estimating that that could be as much as $3 million a year by the time that legislation would be fully implemented, if indeed it's passed. I know the city's interested in, you know, obviously opposing that legislation and doing what we can to maintain our autonomy on our sales tax revenues.
And I jump in on this one a little bit too, if you don't mind. You know, each year when the legislature is in session, we have some bills that we're forwarding that forward our interests, but also there are bills that are introduced that we are working to explain to our legislators how they negatively impact the city that sometimes our legislators may not be aware of. And there are a number of bills now, and Brent alluded to one, and it has to do with a potential hit to our sales tax revenue of as much as $3 million. And we're working, and I know the council is very instrumental in helping, alert our legislators to the potential negative impact of some of this legislation, because our budget, as you know, those of you that have been through our budget in the past few years, we are now very tight, as Brent mentioned, and we aren't in a position where we had been some years ago, where we might be able to absorb through some reallocation of resources a major hit like that. So, you know, we're active in the legislative process to help our elected leaders in the state understand the negative impact of some of this legislation.
Thank you. And if I can add to that, when we have to take hits such as this one from new legislation or hits to state shared revenue or any HERF funds or other areas, it becomes a structural problem within the city's budget because it's something that we have not had to live without, and we're going to have to change things and possibly even have some of our core services diminished, which could include things like public safety. And so we are constantly watching out for those kinds of legislative items that are going to affect our budget in a drastic way.
I was going to move on. If there are any other questions, let's move on to the half-cent sales tax fund. And for a couple of the people that are new, the half-cent sales tax fund was originally established quite a long time ago to pay the debt service on the city hall, the main city hall buildings. The use of that sales tax is governed by a city council adopted policy on half-cent sales tax. That's part of your principles of sound financial management. And in accordance with that policy, the half-cent sales tax fund pays, again, debt service on the original municipal complex, as well as debt that was later issued to build the Peoria Performing Arts Center. Even more recently, half-cent sales tax fund is the source to repay the debt used to construct the new, two new spring training clubhouses and related stadium improvements. And based on prior council direction, the half-cent sales tax fund would provide the funding for a city parking garage should the Peoria Sports Park project continue to move forward. Development agreement obligations are also paid from this funding source. Examples include a number of development agreements that date back and were put in place to support the development of the Bell Road Corridor. And more recently, council has directed that this fund support new economic development agreements with some of the companies that are relocating and moving to Peoria. Also in accordance with the policy, certain operating costs are paid from the fund. Examples include certain public safety costs, costs associated with the Peoria Sports Complex, operating costs associated with the Economic Development Department itself. We project that the half-cent sales tax fund will have some capacity over the five-year planning period to support additional economic development opportunities, capital or operating costs that support council's highest priority objectives. Continuing with our major fund outlook, the streets fund is primarily supported by state gas tax revenues. This fund helps support a number of Peoria's street maintenance and traffic engineering operations, and we're projecting that we will be able to continue supporting those expenditures over the next five years. The transit fund helps support the city's dial-a-ride and fixed route transit systems. That fund is currently funded by state lottery proceeds. It's also subsidized in part by our own city transportation sales tax. In terms of water and wastewater, as I mentioned earlier, our utility rate study is underway. We anticipate that the study will support modest rate increases in water and wastewater, but we'll be discussing that with you in more detail during the upcoming budget workshops. Residential solid waste, financial outlook remains good. We may not require any adjustments, rate adjustments, in that fund to support our current level of service. There is some financial strain on the commercial solid waste fund. As you are aware, that line of business is subject to competition from private commercial solid waste haulers. In the short term, the fund's able to support its continued operations, but in a long-term perspective, either rates or operational adjustments will likely be required. There are several important issues that may have a significant financial impact. Some examples of those are included on the slide. The first of that, as we alluded to earlier and we'll talk to you about again later, is growth in Peoria is going to require capital expenditures and operating expenditures. On the capital side, there are some limitations in place as to how much debt we can issue. And as I touched upon earlier, legislation over the past few years has placed some new limits on our using impact fees to help finance growth. In addition, as we just talked about a little bit, the state has some significant financial issues to address. I believe that addressing their current deficit is going to take a lot longer than just this upcoming year. Their basic structural problem may not be tackled for some time. There is some risk to Peoria and other cities that the city may, in the next couple of years, pass their budget problems onto us. As the state works to solve those deficit problems, some of our state shared revenues may be at risk. We just talked about their legislation that would impact significantly Peoria with the residential rental sales tax legislation. And there's continuing transition of sales tax administration to the State Department of Revenue under allegedly for what they call tax simplification. And recently, the courts have ruled that the state owes significant funding to the schools. How the state solves this problem is going to be of interest to us and other cities as well. There are also issues associated with funding state retirement systems. Although the Arizona State Retirement System is, which is the largest of the retirement systems, appears relatively well-funded, there are issues with the public safety retirement system resulting from recent court decisions on their benefits, legislative benefits over the past several years, coupled with the investment markets during the fiscal downturn. So that has caused some funding issues. Staff's going to be working to develop a funding strategy and bring that back to you in the future for your consideration. We would like to have some future discussions with you, and I've identified a series of topics that might be coming up over the next few months. We would like to use those as opportunities to present to you the information you need in making your policy decisions. As I just mentioned, the council workshop sessions in April will be focused on the budget, the capital plan, the operating budget for next year, and we'll be talking with you about the rates as well. We have a council study session tentatively planned in March to discuss the city's investment policy and to recommend some minor changes. I think that will be of interest to you. There were three topics raised during your past year budget workshops that we wanted to follow up on. Those included a conversation about park rangers, the Peoria Center for the Performing Arts, and fire paramedic staffing. There are two topics related to our city's debt financing. We're looking at, to see if there are some opportunities to refinance our existing debt at lower interest rate that would result in lower debt service costs, and we'll be looking at the need to issue new debt to fund upcoming capital projects. And lastly, a topic of interest, I think, would be what we talked about in terms of growth in Peoria, issues associated with that growth. One part of that would be how do we finance the capital and operating One part of that would be how do we finance the capital and operating costs associated with that? So I guess in conclusion, I hope that this update, it's been fairly brief, but I hope it's been useful in covering some of our key foundational principles, our financial status, a few topics of interest to you. I would conclude by saying our financial position is solid. Our reserves are funded and in place. We are cautiously optimistic, looking forward, and are projecting a continued recovery to our economy. But as I said, the next couple of years is going to be tight. There's not a lot of room for new, ongoing general fund expenditures, and our resources to fund large capital projects are limited. So the operating budget that we're going to be talking with you about will require identification of what your highest priorities are, and that funding those may require, we require some trade-offs. So we'll have those conversations with you, and we're looking forward to working with you during that process.
Thank you. Any questions? Well, we look forward to getting ready for budget season. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vicky, you have a question?
Brent, you don't have to go back there, but the three pages that were pretty early on that showed the bar graphs, how we compared with other cities.
Could I have a copy of those, a hard copy, sent to my office?
Sure. Well, we can send that presentation to all of the council members.
Okay, if they want it, thank you.
I do.
To me, a bar graph is very visual and when people say, what do you charge in relation to Glendale or something?
Sure, right.
So we'll have a lot of conversations in our near future as we get into the budget, but for now, I guess we'll end with flowers, children, and baseball on this slide.
Kumbaya.
That's all we have in this evening.
Three happy subjects.
We are adjourned until our 7:00 PM meeting. Thank you.